I'd like to call the Crystal Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Banks is absent. Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, we have an agenda before us. Looking for a motion on this agenda. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Olga?
I'll second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. You guys have filled our chambers here. This is awesome.[66.73][66.73](Laughter). Usually it's a little bit more quiet and lonely. Chief Revering is here to start the proceedings, so welcome, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Once again, as you know, last meeting, we had some awards, presentations, and due to COVID, all of those were be pushed back for a little bit. So once again, we're very proud to share with you the outstanding work that our men and women do here on a regular basis. Most of their work goes largely unrecognized, and we all understand that this is a part of their job. However, as you know, there are times when the actions of officers far surpass our normal model of service with compassion, integrity, and professionalism. As part of the police department's recognition program, we feel there are times that accomplishments should be recognized in front of the city council and community, which is why we're here today. I'm honored to recognize four officers tonight whose work has met that threshold. And as I just said, due to the pandemic, this is why we're here today, and it's a little bit past the normal time that we would have them. But I am going to ask Investigator Brian Elstrom, Lieutenant Hacker, and Investigator Tim Tourville to step up here. On June 21st, 2021, Crystal Police Officers responded to a shooting in the parking lot outside of a restaurant in our city, finding a male who had been shot multiple times and subsequently died from his injuries. Thirty-six hours later, Crystal Police Officers responded to another shooting in the same parking lot, finding three victims who had been shot multiple times by multiple people. It was quickly determined that these two shootings were related, and Investigator Elstrom was assigned as the lead investigator for these cases, with primary assistance from Lieutenant Hacker. Over the next six months, these investigators spent literally hundreds of hours working on these cases, including nights and weekends. Just a snapshot of their efforts include interviewing dozens of people, drafting and serving 24 search warrants, obtaining and analyzing numerous pieces of evidence, confiscating three handguns, and viewing hours and hours of surveillance videos. Additionally, Investigator Tourville uses expertise as a cell bright forensic examiner to assist Investigator Elstrom in reviewing and analyzing hours of forensic cellphone data, which became very key pieces to this investigation. Through their extensive work, these investigators were able to present solid cases to the Hennepin County Attorney's Office, which resulted in three suspects being charged with various crimes, including second-degree murder, first-degree assault, aiding and offending an offender, second-degree drug possession, and possession of a firearm by a convicted felon. Their work allowed there to be some closure for the victims and the ability to bring comfort for the Crystal community that those responsible for violent criminal activity will be found, arrested, and prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. The Crystal Police Department Award of Merit is presented to department personnel for an extraordinary act, achievement, or accomplishment during the performance of their duties, and is being presented to Investigator Elstrom and Lieutenant Hacker for their tireless work on solving these cases.[263.33][263.33](Applause). The Crystal Police Department Exceptional Performance Award is presented to department personnel who distinguish themselves by performing outstanding services during the course of their normal duties or exceptional service performed above and beyond normal duties. And it's being presented today to Investigator Tourville for the many hours of expert cellphone analysis and overall assistance to this investigation.[293.64][293.64](Applause).
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Chairman of the State.
On December 31st, 2020, Investigator Tourville and Officer Elbers responded to a mental health crisis in Robinsdale. Robinsdale officers were dispatched to report of a male hanging from the outside of a third-floor balcony who was threatening to jump. Investigator Tourville and Officer Elbers are two of the department's crisis negotiators and were requested to the scene to help. Investigator Tourville made his way to the apartment and stood at the balcony door just feet away from where the male was hanging from the balcony. Investigator Tourville negotiated with the male for over an hour, trying to literally talk him off the ledge. Officer Elbers was able to speak with the subject's parents to gather critical information, which helped in the negotiation process. Officer Elbers was able to keep the family away from the subject, knowing it could further agitate the male. As Investigator Tourville was talking with the male, he became very angry as he could see first responders developing rescue plans, and began making statements that his jumping was imminent, and Investigator Tourville recognized he needed to act immediately to keep the male from committing suicide. Investigator Tourville cleared the balcony door and grabbed onto the armpits of the subject, pinning him to the balcony as the male tried to break free of his grasp. Officer Elbers and other officers got onto the balcony and held onto the male until the fire department could get the bucket truck up to help him. The Crystal Police Department Award of Valor is presented to department personnel for an act which results in saving of the life or an act involving risk to a member which is performed above and beyond the call of duty. This award is presented for individual acts of heroism in the line of duty, and is being presented to Investigator Tourville for his outstanding work, quick actions, and selfless The Crystal Police Department Award of Merit is presented to department personnel for an extraordinary act, achievement, or accomplishment during the performance of their duties, and is being presented to Officer Elbers for his outstanding work on this call and his assistance in saving the life of this male.[485.02][485.02](Applause).
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you again for allowing us to present tonight. As you can see, there are family and friends of all officers in the audience tonight, and this is very important for all of you to recognize their bravery, their heroism, and their outstanding work that they do for our community every day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always an honor to have you do this for us, and it is, so that we realize and understand the sacrifices that are made, and we honor you. Thank you very much. All right, John is coming in for the next. John Ohm is coming in for the next presentation.
Great presentation to follow.
It is.[551.82][551.82](Laughter). Thank you all for coming and for your support of these officers.
I would like to know, chief, where do you keep all these officers hidden?
I'm sorry?
I don't recognize any of these officers.
Right. They're getting younger and younger.[578.04][578.04](Laughter).
They sure are.
Thank you for saying that.[582.04][582.04](Laughter).
Maybe we weren't talking to him.[585.79][585.79](Laughter). All right, go ahead, John.
All right, we're here tonight to present the city council with two awards of excellence from the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. We are also joined here tonight by two members of our staff that helped make these awards possible, Scott Berger, our Recreation Services Manager, and Leilani Fisher, Recreation Supervisor. To present the award tonight, though, I am very pleased to introduce Alyssa Fram. She's a Recreation Supervisor with the City of Plymouth, and she also serves on the Awards Committee of the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. So, turn it over to Alyssa.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It is an honor to be here tonight and present Minnesota Recreation and Park Association 2020 Awards of Excellence to the City of Crystal. Before I do that, I'd like to take a couple minutes to tell you about Minnesota Recreation and Park Association and the Awards of Excellence Program. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association was formed in 1937 to foster growth and development of the parks and recreation profession throughout the state. We have over 850 members who come from municipal, county, state, district, commercial, and private agencies. The Awards of Excellence is an annual program that was solely created to recognize agencies and their staff for an outstanding project that was either implemented in 2020 or had substantial revisions in 2020. MRPA members may nominate a project for an Award of Excellence in seven different categories: administrative or management strategies, communications, park and facility, programming and events, sponsorship and partnerships, sustainability and volunteer initiatives. Only the top-scoring nominations are selected to receive an Award of Excellence recognition. On behalf of the MRPA Awards Committee, it is my pleasure tonight to present these two awards of excellence to the City of Crystal for Becker Park redevelopment and storybook trail. Congratulations.[721.86][721.86](Applause).
Can you all get a photo?
Take a picture with council.
Well... And John.[739.29][739.29](Laughter).
What about the Commissioner liaison?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Don't we win every year? I mean...[768.61][768.61](Laughter).
We're winning a lot of stuff. Lots of good projects.
Yeah, a lot of good stuff going on.
Jinx us.
Probably go over to the podium. Yeah.
Our work's a little too big to fit over here.[781.16][781.16](Laughter). Yes, I rehearsed that.
All right.
Thank you, guys, for coming in.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for being here. We got two awards, ACEC for Becker Park Storybook Infiltration. I think the bigger thing tonight is you've seen a lot of success tonight, but we could not do what we do without your support. So I hope really you take that and kind of internalize it and then say, you know, we are doing a good thing here in Crystal, and clearly we're getting recognized for it on a lot of different levels.[811.61][811.61](Laughter).
Shouldn't the mayor get in that photo, too?
Yeah, I think it's poison.
I don't know about that. We don't have a liaison to the park or to public works, do we?
No, we don't. Our guys are selflessly at home sleeping, so they can be fully rested and then come back to serve our residents tomorrow.
Very nice.
I don't know. I just envisioned him at age 12 receiving an award. That's awesome. All right. We are on to our consent agenda. I'll read that into the record at this time. We will... They are generally non-controversial in routine and nature, and we pass them in a single motion. Approval of the minutes from the following meetings, the Crystal Work Session from June 15th and a council meeting on that same evening, city council work session from July 8th as well, approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in her office. An approval of a resolution accepting the following donations: $7,500 from the Crystal Lions Club for the K-9 unit, $50 from the estate of Judith Thornton for the Crystal Police statue, $15,000 from the VFW Post 494 for the Crystal K-9 unit, $2,000 from the VFW same post for the 2021 Crystal Airport Open House, $7,000 from the West Metro Fire Relief Association for the Crystal K-9 unit, $1,000 from West Metro as well, again, for the Crystal Frolics Water Ball Competition, and $1,000 from Westfall American Legion for the 2022 Crystal Airport Open House. And then approval for a resolution authorizing the execution of the Joint Powers Agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, and the City of Crystal regarding access to the criminal justice data communication network. That is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion on that. Go ahead, Therese.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, looking for a second?
Second.
All right, thanks, David. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right. Open forum is an opportunity for the council to hear from citizens, to hear their concerns. We set aside some time each council meeting to hear from the public, and you are allowed three minutes per person to talk, usually 10 minutes per topic. What else is on there? That's about it. And I understand we have a couple people here. Did you get any paperwork?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, after, I know, I think there's two people here?
I believe so.
And after you're done, there's a pink sheet that we'd like to have you fill out, and when you're done, give it to Chrissy. But I'm going to call you up to speak. When you come up to speak, state your name and address, and then you can begin. Is it...
I think Mr. Kneisel.
Mr. Kneisel? It's not Mary. It's mister?
I, uh, Mary's not here.
Okay. Why don't you step up over here, and you may begin? You can worry about the yellow thing afterwards.[1040.35][1040.35](Laughter). But tell us your name.
Scott Kneisel.
All right.
And I reside at 6916 58th Avenue North.
Okay.
And basically, I'm here to complain. I mean, we've called the police several times on our neighbors. They show up and friends partying 3 o'clock in the morning, music in their cars, making all kinds of racket. We've called 911 several times over the last, I'd say, year and a half. And last Friday night was basically when the police finally showed up and actually wrote a citation for this resident. It's a rental property. I mean, and, I mean, I understand they're going to finally contact the landlord, but I mean, in my eyes, we think we should have had more than one strike right now. But I'm just here to basically voice my opinion, as well as my wife's, that she's emailed several of you, talked with Chief Revering, and they're all on our side. We're just hoping that some, something, we can come to a conclusion with this, maybe, I don't know, and just that council, police, everyone is on our side. I mean, there's parking violations every night, just about. They have garbage. I mean, they had a couch sitting in their driveway since last fall. They finally moved it. Now it's behind their garage, right next to our backyard, where we have a camper parked that could be mouse-bug-infested. Who knows? So, I mean, we just want to make sure that somebody's on our side that's going to either inspect, and not even just them. Other neighbors, they have a, I mean, this neighbor also has like a paint booth in his garage. He does car work. I don't know if that's legit or legal. Neighbors around us, they do auto work, always working on their cars. They have one car that's practically parked in their backyard right now. And they also have a mattress in their backyard. That is also a rental property. I mean, it's private, but just the residents need to, or inspectors need to be a little more cautious with the neighborhood. We're trying to clean it up. We've been there 21 years now. My neighbor, Jim, he lives across the street from me. He's, he sees it, too. It bothers him. Other residents, the noise. The main thing I'm here for, though, is the party issue. I mean, it's disturbing my sleep. I look forward to the weekends and Friday night, 3 o'clock in the morning, get woken up. So, that's my main reason here. My wife would be here right now, but she'd probably speak words that you guys wouldn't want to hear. So, but we just want to make sure that this issue is brought to justice, so...
All right. Thank you, Scott.
That's all I can say. I don't know what else to say more, but, so...
All right. Go ahead, Nancy.
I have a question. Is this property up for rental renewal right now in this list that we just approved? For rental renewal?
Well, that would be embarrassing.
I know, right?
I do know while I'm stalling, while I look, I do know that both the police department and code enforcement are aware and are taking steps, as Mr. Kneisel said.
And I know it does, it's in the city code. My wife has highlighted several items in here, and, I mean, the big thing is...
No.
"Noisy parties gathering. No person shall between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM congregate at or participate in any party or gathering of two or more people from which noise emanates in a sufficient volume as to disturb the peace, quiet, and repose of another person." No person, so no one will remain at such a party or gathering.
Yep. All right.
So, last Friday, they should have actually broke the party up and sent everyone home, but they did not. They did issue parking tickets because of the 2, between 2:00 and 5:00 AM, no parking restriction, but in our eyes, I think the party itself should have been just eliminated, and everyone should have been sent home.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
Scott.
All right. Carla is on Zoom.
Yes.
So, you can't fill out a yellow sheet for us. We'll fill one out for you. But just introduce yourself, give us your address, and then you may begin.
Okay. All right. Hang on.
Yep.
I have three topics, actually. The first topic is increased crime in Crystal. My name is Carla Hurley, and I've lived in Crystal for 21 years. I live in the Welcome Park neighborhood, which is one of the safest neighborhoods in Crystal. Tonight, I would like to voice my concerns about increased crime in Crystal.
Carla, could you give us your address, please?
Oh, 4831 Xenia Avenue North.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Crystal is not as safe as it was when I moved here. Currently, it is ranked 20th overall in the list of most dangerous Minnesota cities with a population of over 5,000 people. These are statistics taken from FBI data compiled in late 2019, published in 2020. So how do we rank compared to other neighboring cities? Brooklyn Center is ranked at 12th, Robinsdale ranked 14th, Brooklyn Park comes in at 15th. New Hope, surprisingly, is safer than Crystal, coming in at 52nd. Golden Valley is ranked 71st. Lakeville, with a population about three times that of Crystal, is ranked at 106th. I moved from Lakeville to Crystal in 1999 to be closer to work and to buy my first house. How do the bigger cities fare? Minneapolis, not surprisingly, ranks second. St. Paul is at sixth place. Bloomington comes in at 18th. Now, I'm sure that crimes have increased, especially recently, and so the rankings may also change. A new report is due out soon, and I'm looking forward to seeing them. These statistics concern me greatly. I don't have the data from when I decided to move to Crystal, but I do know that Crystal's rank was much lower. In other words, Crystal was safer. When I was looking for the house, I did research and based my decision on where to live based on the data and information I compiled. So what's happened? Why is our city so high in the ranking of most dangerous Minnesota cities? What's gone wrong? What solutions can we find to make Crystal a safer city to live in? I know I've done my part to keep my neighborhood safe. I have security cameras, and my house and property are well-lit. My dogs are alert and tell me when something's wrong. I report crime, whether it's misdemeanor, drug use, or armed robbery. I'm not afraid of getting involved. Criminals don't scare me. If I see someone getting assaulted, I'll intervene. An action goes against my beliefs, values, and principles. The neighbors in my area are very grateful for this. They feel safer in their homes. I don't go out of my way to watch for crime, but I'm alert and aware of my surroundings. If I see something out of the ordinary, I'll report it.
Carla, you need to wrap up this topic.
I am. I'm, last sentence.
Go ahead.
I'm afraid of what the future will hold with proposed blue line extension and other things. I moved here to live in a safe city. I don't want to move, but I might if crime increases. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. What was your next topic?
My next topic, sorry, I had to take a drink of water.
No, I get that.
Is Crystal Phoenix Place.
Okay.
All right.
Phoenix is the haircutting place, is that correct?
Uh, no. It is a drug rehab residential facility that moved into the Thomas Tool and Supply on West Broadway, 4901 West Broadway. Do I have to give my address and everything like that again?
No, we got that. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Carla Hurley, and I live in the Welcome Park neighborhood in Crystal. I didn't even know what kind of business had moved into the old Thomas Tool and Supply building until very recently. I thought that office-type business wasn't there, not a residential drug rehab center. I thought that the zoning for the building was commercial. When did the zoning change? No one in the neighborhood was informed that the drug rehab center was moving into the building. No letters, nothing. Many neighbors are upset by its present, presence. There are many families with small children near the center. They don't want the drug rehab facility so close to their homes. Have the clients from the Crystal Phoenix Place caused problems in the neighborhood? Yes. We've had clients walking through yards, checking cars and houses, walking through the alley, asking for money and cigarettes. I caught a group of residents from the center smoking dope in front of my house. I took pictures and called the police. By the time the police came, the group had returned to the center, so the officer did basically nothing. I put a post up on Nextdoor regarding the drug rehab center. One person replied to me that I think all of us living on this block are having issues with the facility. I saw that group hanging out, and I thought that was likely going on, but I didn't know for sure. I'm very uncomfortable with it in regards to feeling safe or that my kids are safe, but I'm also someone who doesn't get drunk in front of my kids, or ever, really, so legal or not legal, I don't care. Thanks, Carla, for contacting the police and talking to the facility counselors. Another person replied to me on Nextdoor, "A resident from this facility recently ransacked our neighborhood and stole from some of them, even boldly tried to go into the house." What do city officials have to say? Maybe we all need to voice valid concern there. Now, I know that the mayor owns and operates BSM Management Transitional and Sober Housing, which has residential facilities in the Twin Cities, St. Cloud, and Duluth. So the mayor definitely has conflict of interest in this matter. I'm wondering if the Crystal Phoenix Place got approved due to persuasion on the part of the mayor, like senators like to bring projects to their states, for example. Is that why nobody was informed about it? We don't want any more crime or trouble in the Welcome Park neighborhood.
Carla?
Yep, wrapping it up.
All right, thank you.
It's one of the safest neighborhoods in Crystal. I hope that the city council and police take our concerns seriously. Thank you.
All right. Third topic?
All right. And my third topic, which will probably be shorter.
That's okay.
Illegal fireworks. I know we have, what?
I don't know who... I don't know who.
I know that we have a lot to celebrate this year, but fireworks going on and on for weeks and weeks late into the night wears on a person. Many of these fireworks are illegal, loud booms and bangs, and fireworks that fly into the air. It's been very dry here. We are in a drought. On the Fourth of July, the roof of my church caught on fire due to illegal fireworks. Not only are these fireworks illegal, but they disrupt people's lives. People can't get a decent night's sleep and are sleep deprived, which is a driving hazard and dangerous. Veterans like me and other people with PTSD suffer in terror, suffering nightmares and flashbacks. I've broken a crown, cracked, and chipped my teeth from gnashing my teeth in my nightmares. I've even had to call the Veterans Crisis Line several times due to the stress that the fireworks and noises caused to me. What can be done to enforce the illegal fireworks that are going off for weeks and weeks and at late hours? Can we not find these people? Take away their fireworks or something? There must be something that can be done to the, the situation. There are many posts on Nextdoor.com, even a group has been started on Nextdoor.com. And so, um, I said that I would address it, bring it up to the next city council meeting, and I am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carla. All right. You know, I'm gonna make a, a comment because you, you brought up my personal business in public here. My business with BSM has nothing to do with Phoenix, nor do I have any approval process of an inpatient treatment center in the city of Crystal. So those allegations that you suggested just did not happen and would not happen. And I'm gonna leave it at that. So, thank you, Carla.
Thank you for the clarification.
You bet. All right. Is there anybody else wishing to speak during open forum? Anyone here? Chief?
Mr. Mayor and Council, if you don't mind, I just want to address Mr. and Mrs. Kneisel. Just so you're aware, and I'll be cautious with how I do this, just because some of the information is not public information, but just please know, and I've had conversations with Mary several times, we are addressing the concerns at the home. Uh, the, the home, um, as Mr. Kneisel said, was given several, uh, tickets on vehicles and also a noise ordinance ticket, uh, Friday night. And, um, a first strike letter will be sent out to the homeowner, so just this week, so just know that. So I just want to make sure you are aware of that.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Do you contact, or does the city contact the, uh, property owner?
Yes.
Okay, that's part of this? Okay.
Yep.
Yep. Go ahead, John.
I just wanted to add up what the chief said. We, uh, we sent out the strike letter today. Went to the property owner, the tenant as well. Um, and also, we also sent a notice for the sofa and other debris in the yard. That also went out today.
All right. Thank you, John. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jim Omer. I live at 691158th Avenue North. I sent you and a couple council members and some other people an email today after Scott and I had a conversation, and some of the other neighbors have been down to see me and let me know their concerns about what goes on in their neighborhood. I've lived at my address for 37 years. So I've been there for a long time. I, I spent 33 years with the State Patrol as a truck inspector. So I parked a state vehicle in my driveway, and I used to park it on a dirt area until I got notified by the city that I couldn't do that. What Scott's talking about, and, and by the way, I paved my area so I could legally park there, so I didn't have to go visit with the chief. What Scott's talking about is a problem. He lives next door. I live across the street. Every Saturday morning, every Sunday morning, we go out with trash bags and pick up the trash and the junk and look at all the cars parked up and down the street. And, and Scott's right. He's, it's out of control. He's next door to it. I'm across the street, so I don't, I don't get the noise as much as he does. With regard to the other things, uh, we've got a number of houses in our neighborhood within the one block area where we have boats, cars that have been parked there in excess of five years in one case. It's been parked there. It just sits there. It never moves. It's parked on grass. It's parked on dirt. It just, you know, you look at the neighborhood and you say, hey, wait a minute. This is a great neighborhood. We want it to remain that way. That's why we, that's why we're here, because we care. Um, I contacted the city a couple weeks ago, and, and I got a code enforcement officer, I think it was, out to the house, and he marked a tree next door to me because I'm afraid, because it's dead, it's going to fall over on my car. It, the bigger fear is going to fall over on my car when I'm in my car. Or when my grandkids are around or somebody else is around, but it, you know. It, it's in a rented house, which has now been sold, and the tree still stands. My fear is the new owners are gonna come in and say, hey, wait a minute, it's gonna take us a while to get things done. The tree isn't gonna come back to life. The tree is dead. It's going to fall over. I know it, and I want to just save some people some problems. Again, with regard to the non-operational boats, vehicles, like Scott said, the debris in people's yards. This is our neighborhood. This is where we live. Scott's lived there for 21 years. I've lived there a little bit longer than he has. We want our neighborhood to be nice. We want it to be taken care of. And I was, after Scott told me tonight that the city council meeting is gonna be here, I said, well, I'll be here. And I went up and down the street encouraging other neighbors to come. And, and of course, you can see that we got the usual response we get, but I can tell you, I'm, I'm kind of the sounding board because everybody knows what I used to do. And, and I get calls all the time about the speeders. I, I can't remember what else I told the, the city manager about, because she and I have exchanged emails over the years. A lot, Sun Post, whatever else irritates me, I, I contact her about. So anyway, that's, that's my time, and I'm, I'm gonna let you go.
Thank you.
But I just did want to support what Scott says. It's as bad as he says it is.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Here, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Have you, how long have these tenants been there? You may have said that upfront, but I don't, I didn't write it down.
It is a rental property. I know they have, like, I know when they, they have a two-year lease.
Okay.
The renter only offers a two-year lease on the property, and it's been about two years, give or take. I don't know exactly. I couldn't name it to the month or time that he actually moved in.
Okay.
It could be on record, it could be on file. I don't know.
Okay.
So it's close to, it's probably two-year lease anyways, or he might have just went over it, but I don't know how they would have renewed it. And I mean, does rental, do they inspect rental properties annually?
Yes, we do. Well, not annually, not necessarily.
Well, I would guess this one would be annual. We have options, but yes, it is an annual inspection typically.
Okay, because I know they put a structure like over their deck, and I don't think it would pass COVID.
All right.
I don't know if they had a full permit to do it or not, but they just put it up and cover the structure over their deck.
We're gonna move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on. I'll take care of the problem. I'll go concern the ball.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you for coming in. Um, it's been a long time since we've had activity in, in this part of the, um, this part of the council meeting, so, uh, we are here. We do listen. And thanks for your courage for coming. We appreciate it. That's all I got on that. All right. Hold on. I'm on the wrong page again. There we go.
Jim, did you fill out your?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks again.
Am I on regular agenda? First item?
First item.
All right.
Got a big list of disbursements of $25,000 or greater. I'll read those into the record at this time. GMH Asphalt Corporation for the 2021 Mill and Overlay Project for $410,792. Lord's for the monthly application support and hosting for $34,823. Center for Environmental, Environment and Energy for Home Improvement Loan Program costs $59,863. Minpara for the employee city required contributions for pay date 8/11/21, $64,080. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission for June water costs for $176,033. Landscape Structure Inc. for Valley Place Park Play Area for $309,548. West Metro Fire Rescue District for June contributions is $110,140. League of Minnesota Cities for quarterly workers' compensation insurance for $127,874. WWGordish, how do you pronounce that? Close enough Association for Waterside, Water Slide Pump Replacement, $30,006. Health Partners, July Health Insurance premiums for $125,921. And then Minpara for, uh, pay date 6/25/21 for the city required contributions and the employee contributions for $61,844. Waste Management for recycling costs for May, $43,956. Met Council Environmental Services for Water Waste Services for July, $143,035. Minpara for Employee and City Required Contributions for Pay Date 7/9/21, $59,462. Disbursements of $25,000 or greater total is $1,757,382 and 21 cents. Questions from the council on any of these items? Seeing none? Looking for a motion on this? John, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, a list of disbursements over $25,000.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a second? Therese?
I will second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion carries. So we have, we have a twofer, as it were. Our Police Chief Stephanie Reubring and our Financial Director Jean McGann here to address the council. Welcome you guys.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As you can see, Jean and I were a little preemptive there in getting up to the podium, so I apologize for that. As you know, we have had a couple different work sessions regarding leasing police vehicles. Um, I'll just do a very brief, quick synopsis for the listening audience. Uh, you know, last year, when we were researching a, a software program for our police department, our lieutenant came across a department that was actually leasing vehicles. We started doing research, as you know, on, um, on, sorry, on researching vehicles and leasing vehicles, I should say, and hence the reason why we're here tonight and why we've had a couple work sessions with you regarding it. I'm gonna turn it over to Jean to discuss the finance piece of it, but at the end, the ask will be for the city man, or to, for the city manager, allowing the city manager to execute an agreement with Enterprise. So Jean, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. So as we have talked at a couple, uh, different times when we've brought the leasing alternative forward, there's different leasing alternatives. There's an open lease and a closed lease. So what we're looking at is a open lease, which really allows, um, you know, no prepayment penalties. There's term flexibilities, no mileage restrictions, things of that nature. Uh, just to go over some of the requirements, uh, which, uh, you know, we were asked to provide previously. You know, it's, you know, a lot are, are pretty standard. If you're late, you pay 18% if it's 20 days late. The city is responsible for licenses and other charges, registration plates and inspections, as well as maintenance and improvements to the vehicles. City must keep everything in good condition. Uh, the city is responsible for risk of loss as well as insurance. So, uh, as we presented before, there's really two scenarios to consider. The first scenario is looking at what we currently do. What we currently do is we, uh, purchase and replace, uh, the vehicles on a rotating basis. Typically, unfortunately, there's usually about two vehicles that are totaled every year. And so, of course, we do have a estimated vehicle, the, um, value of the vehicle of $55,000, and the insurance deductible is $25,000 per occurrence, $75,000 annual maximum. Now, with this, uh, if you look at the leasing scenario, of course, the insurance components of this will remain the same. If we continue on with our current cycle of purchasing and then replacing vehicles, we'll, you know, in total, the total vehicle purchases over 10 years, there's about 39 vehicles that we will go through. Uh, scenario two is the leasing option. Uh, the first-year replacement is based on the CIP schedule plus a seven additional vehicles that were identified that likely should be replaced but are not currently within the five-year purchase replacement program. All the other information, uh, that is, is the same as if you purchased a vehicle, except that your average annual car payment for one car is about $1,012 per vehicle. So looking at scenario two, the total vehicle leases or, uh, you know, replacements would be 46 over a 10-year period. So if you look at your lease versus purchase savings through 2030, it's about $181,805. Plus, you add on the additional vehicles that are not currently in the purchase plan, and we anticipate that cost without inflation to be about $50,000, $55,000 per vehicle, which adds another $385,000 for a total projected savings of $566,805. We do have, you know, a statement from the city of Champlin, the chief of police, where they have been leasing for a bit now. Uh, they were, uh, successful in cutting $40,000 for capital the first year and around $30,000 the second year. And they anticipated savings around $230,000 over the first five years of the plan. Considering we're looking at, uh, over a period of 10 years, the overall cost savings is approximately the same. Other, uh, cities that are currently leasing vehicles are Brooklyn Park, Champlin, Fridley, and Bloomington. Those are just a few of the examples. There are many others as well. And, uh, at this point, as Stephanie had mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, is that we are requesting council to consider authorizing city manager to enter into the agreement for leasing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. John, just, um, so the cost savings roughly over the next 10 years is $566,000?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, uh, that savings has to remain in the revolving fund, is that correct?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Okay.
Which is a good thing.
It could be.
Yeah.
It could be. I, I mean, you know, if you're funding a perf fund for purchases, for capital purchases, and then you're adding more operational expense, you would think the expense should be, should give somewhere. Right?
We'll figure it out. We got 10 years to figure it out, don't we?
I don't know. I mean, you know, we got this year. If we do it this year, this is when, you know, we as a council have the opportunity to... I mean, if, if we do this, we're increasing the operation, but we're, we're not able to take that savings out of the perf. Am I understanding that right, or am I wrong?
It shouldn't be any operational change because we right now pay for maintenance. We right now pay for registration and licensing. So that shouldn't be a change in the operations. But because of the way we got the money for the perf fund, any purchase, so we've got to keep that for police capital needs.
So the lease component of this will be paid for out of the perf fund.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. So it's like a capital lease. Got it?
Correct.
I'm all better.
Yep.
Thank you.
I wasn't getting your question. Sorry about that.
I, I wasn't, I didn't really form it. I mean, I was kind of thinking it on the fly, so just had to formulate it. Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you like a motion?
Go ahead, John.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the lease agreements with Enterprise for leasing of police vehicles.
All right. Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Therese. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion carries. All right. Next, it's our chief. Welcome, chief.
Sorry, you're seeing me a lot tonight. I know you don't like that, but I'll hurry.
That's not true.
Thank you, by the way, for, um...
I'll make you very happy.
Thank you, Councilors Parsons. Uh, thank you for the last, um, motion. And also, um, again, I've been before you a couple different times at a work session regarding our, uh, police department statue in front of the new police department. As I discussed with you, um, in the last couple work sessions and showed you a, a diagram picture that isn't really gonna be, um, exactly what it says, but we're, we're depicting a police... So as soon as the artist, so once, once the agreement, once he gets that agreement, he will then do the actual real drawing itself, and then I will make sure and get that to you.
And please let us know how we can help raise funds for that for you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead, Nancy.
Oh, did you have a question? I was. Yeah, I actually, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
At the time we get the real, real sketch, is that set, not to use a pun, but set in stone, or can we make modifications at that point?
Yeah, no, no, so we'll be able to make modifications once you see it, up until a certain point, right? So they start doing the bronze casting itself at a certain point where we won't be able to make modifications, but once we get this, I will put it into a fundraising document, if you will, and actually share that with you.
So before he starts, he or she will see a picture of it or drawing?
That's what I'm hoping, yep.
And have we seen any of the work from the studio before?
Oh, gosh, yes. So he, so have you, I brought in, were you here when I brought in the actual little statue of myself? Sounds really odd.
I wouldn't remember that, chief.
So he does, he does, he does miniatures, yeah, he does miniature statues along with life-size statues and then these other statues. The city of Robinsdale has the protector statue in front of their police and fire building. Several police departments in the state of Minnesota and throughout the country have his, his statues as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. We have a first. I'll do the second.
Yep. Do you need me to read it?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the execution of an agreement for the statue in front of the new police station.
All right, now I'll second that. Members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mark Ray, welcome back.
All right, let's talk about building things that people won't see. I will, let me just find it first. Were you already, was you already in presentation mode?
Yeah, it was already.
Nope. My bad, wrong one, standby. Throwing me off, Mike. I don't think it was. Man. I wanted to change slides. All right, well, the first item before you is a replacement of the, or the stormpipe rehabilitation for Bass Lake Road under here. Mike, I'll let you deal with this while I'm talking. From the intersection of Orchard Street East to the outlet at Twin Lake. This, we, I've talked about this item a few times through this year. We had the additional work to extend all the way to the manhole at Orchard Avenue. Bids were opened back in July. As you can see, there's quite the range of price. We didn't allow the contractor until September 2nd, 2022, to complete the work. Mingar was the low bid. They actually indicated they had a gap in their work. They do a lot of work for Metropolitan Council, actually is where I've interacted with them in previous projects. So the low bid, they're looking to get in here probably late fall to do the work. One correction I do want to make, because I said the pipe was gonna be lined after this is done, that was not true. I got it confused with a different project. What we're doing is we're sealing all the holes in the pipe and then grouting behind where there have been sinkholes, basically. So that's the extent of it, so the pipe itself will be solid by the time it's done. What do you think, Mike?
This stuff?
Yeah, that's it. So I gave you the mouse. So the item before you is gonna be to approve a contract with Mingar for the lining of the stormpipe at the amount of about $228,000. I do want to point out, that includes the bid alternate as well, so that's the full thing, so we got really good, they came in at really good pricing, which is awesome.
Should I just go to the next one?
There's the project. We're gonna do it all.
Okay.
Just go to.
Which one?
This is fine. We'll move it later. Any questions?
Go ahead, John.
So, we're not gonna have a new pipe?
Correct.
Okay, and so in the spots where obviously the pipe has deteriorated, you're just gonna backfill behind the pipe and then basically put a seal in front of it so it doesn't break through?
So to make it sound a little bit fancier, we're going to inject grout in those spaces so it's not like we're just throwing dirt and like shoving it in with a packer, like we're injecting grout in there to seal it up. It's basically gonna be like a concrete that'll fill the void, and then, yes, we're gonna seal it on the inside.
So, you know, obviously there might be like some bigger areas behind that pipe.
Yes. There's an allowance for an amount. So one of the nice things is because they came in so far under, we're gonna do it right so we have a little bit of room to do more to make sure that this first section is done when we're done.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Looking for a motion, then? Go ahead, Olga.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution awarding the contract for stormpipe rehabilitation, and it's, who was the contractor again?
Mingar.
Mingar, all right.
All right. Second? John?
I second a motion.
All right. All members in favor, please, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay? Motion carries.
At least where it doesn't help, in case you're wondering.
Go ahead.
So you can pull that presentation back up and try to go to the next slides.
Is it this one?
Yeah. Here, just open the PowerPoint, and we'll do it old school. Just scroll, all right.
Should be able to do it.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, so the next project is the 2021 Concrete Repair Project. Really, this is just miscellaneous concrete work throughout the city, sections of curb, sidewalk, you name it. There's $58,000 allocated for this project. Price came in at $36,000. That's actually the subcontractor for our Mill and Overlay Project is who that is. They are a little light on work. I don't know how, but they are, so that's why the pricing is that different. Ryan is the prime contractor for our reconstruction project, and Pember, we've actually did a project, or Mill and Overlay, last year, and have been doing some other variety projects. We have a long history with these three companies, but Midwest was the low bid, so a little quote, sorry about that. So with that, the item before you is to approve a contract with Midwest for miscellaneous concrete work.
All right. Thank you. Questions? No questions? Motion? Nancy?
I will make a motion to approve or authorize a contract for the 2021 Concrete Repair Project.
All right, thank you, Nancy. John, second?
I get a motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay? All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So we do have a few announcements. Crystal Frolix is back in its Thursday through Sunday, that's this week, July 22nd to the 25th, at Welcome Park and Becker Park. Becker Park, excuse me, those dates are for Welcome Park, the 22nd to the 25th. Becker Park is the 23rd to the 25th. Metro Transit is holding two community meetings about Crystal segment of the proposed Blue Line Extension. The in-person one is from 5:00 to 7:00 on Monday, July 26th, at Becker Park Stage. The second one is virtual from 7:00 to 6:00 to 7:30, and that is a Zoom meeting on July 29th. In that page, you can see that link on the bluelineextension.org page. Night to Night is coming back. It's in August, August 3rd, to host a block party. Please visit our work, our website at crystalmn.gov. The city council will hold a work session on Thursday, August 5th, 6:30 PM, in the council chambers at City Hall via, and you can visit via Zoom or you can come in person on that.